Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Maybe that's from the last meeting.
Yeah, I second it.
All in favor?
Just come in if you signed it.
There are bills for me?
What's this?
That's what I did.
Yeah, that's just Pam basically paying bills.
That's what?
I, 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 she double-checked.
It's what Pam does.
Okay, so that's the same as paying the bills?
No, no, sorry.
I've double-checked like all the checks and stuff, but I balance out.
We need to move to do a Pam test, to approve it.
Do what?
We need to move to approve a Pam bill, is that what that's in for?
And that was it.
Okay, perfect. She doesn't have...
Don't have paid bills on there.
Who wrote this?
You're fine. Okay, I'll, I'll...
I'll make motion pay the bill.
Okay.
I second it. Perfect. All in favor?
All in favor. Okay. Okay, community cleanup. Where are we at with that?
It was her thing.
Were we supposed to approve something for that, or?
Well, we were gonna talk about ideas of how to motivate people, right?
Brittany was gonna bring somebody or something?
Yeah. Well, I think she was gonna move the man. She was gonna talk to her about what her husband used to do. So, here's my thoughts, can I give thoughts?
Yeah.
Of course.
Uh, you know, you, you have said before you don't want to do like, offer to pick up stuff as a city, but I personally feel like that's your options, whether you do a dumpster, just to kinda help motivate, like set a day, there's gonna be a dumpster, you can have limitations, you have somebody standing out there saying, "No, you can't put that in there." Or have volunteers go around and pick up yard debris. I'm looking at my husband, so I know he volunteers, he loves... You know, some people can't do it themselves, too. So, I think that there is something in taking pride in your community.
I go, see before it's always been upon, like guys would have to, don't we have a dump trucker that could work?
Yeah, it works.
But you have to go around and pick it all up.
My question was, don't you have an ordinance about cleaning up about the driveways and streetways and stuff like that? There should be an ordinance on that place. You can't park stuff out in the driveway or on the roadside?
It probably is, but the problem is...
Getting it enforced.
Yeah, there's, there's rules that you can't park, like a broken vehicle that's on the road has to be registered, it can't be abandoned, that kind of thing, those things exist. They're not enforced. But kind of what Brittany was talking about is telling people to clean up their yard. Your yard looks junky, you need to clean it up. That's what she's talking about.
It's either, it's either you clean it up or you put a fence along and where you get, everybody gets exposed to all your garbage.
And that's what we talked about.
I was talking to Deborah, and she says there's one of them. Yes, there is an ordinance, but you gotta have somebody that'll enforce it.
Well, who do you need to enforce it?
The sheriff's office.
I mean...
Are we talking...
Can't the city council, like Guy Barrett, the guy worked in the city, he's in the majority area, right? He can't go around and do the same thing like what it does with water bills or whatever like that? Even notice that, so you gotta clean it up for so many days, you're penalized?
Well, God's the first one you talk to.
Exactly.
What does the ordinance say?
I mean, I'd like to see baseball playing out better than it is.
Yeah, I'd like to.
And people get zapped, and stuff looking like, it's acceptable this way, and they go that way, like I said, it's not acceptable.
Just look out the door, look up the road or down that road, you can see all the cars parked out next to the road.
It's not acceptable, it's not acceptable. Well, I see them.
But there again, getting somebody to enforce it.
You're mayor, right?
Yeah, I'm the mayor. I can't enforce it.
I mean, dead tree, or?
I don't have no authority to enforce it. I mean, I can tell them.
Are there penalties listed in that ordinance?
No authority through the county courthouse or the Dingham County Sheriff's, something like that?
I've tried to get that before, and they won't, they won't even talk to you about it. I asked them if I could get some authority, like to write tickets and blah, 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 and he slapped that.
What you do, what you do is you either move them, you tell them, they gotta pay the fines? I mean, all you gotta do is send up the paperwork.
I feel like that would have to be in the ordinance, like whatever the penalty is.
There is an ordinance, there is one. The court of Deborah, Deborah Anderson, what I told her, she said, "I don't enforce it."
But the penalty listed.
I'm not trying to be mean about it, saying, but it's like, it is kinda embarrassing.
Well, it is.
Property value, if you let one guy slide, then the next person thinks, "Well, it's acceptable, it goes that way," and just keeps on going.
Yeah, see, I've tried to get Kit Saxon to clean his place up, and he said, "Well, look there across the street, and that's Guy Barrett's place," so, you know?
Well, I know, but he didn't say, "Put up a fence, cover your garbage, nobody's gonna look at it, we're cleaning it up."
If your maintenance man won't clean his yard up, what are you gonna do?
He sends somebody in there to clean it up and make them pay for it, like everybody else does.
It ain't that easy.
The rest of the state, not everybody else.
Not everybody else does it?
The rest of the state, they do that. You need to clean it up, and we'll send a county in there, they'll clean it up for you, and you pay for it.
And part of it's with the fact that we're rural in my city, a lot of things are allowed, but...
We're still being county, right?
We are a county.
And being a county on a road, I mean, it is all the time. You cover it up for us, we'll clean it up, and you're gonna pay the bill.
This is calling for ordinances, right?
But seeing that we're a city, the Dingham County ordinances don't always apply within a city. And the way the ordinances are written may determine what the city can and can't do. So you need to look at the ordinance, find it, and see exactly what the ordinance says. You can't just say, "Oh, we got an ordinance, we're just gonna do this." It's like, you need to know exactly what it says, and what the limitations are on it, because you can get yourself, and the city can get in a big hurt if they do something outside the bounds of what ordinances they're assigned.
No, you do more than what you're doing now, because right now you're not doing nothing.
Right now they're discussing, they're working on it.
It's the slides. You can initiate it, make something, take an issue, pick it up and do something.
That's what I'm trying to tell you, just trying to get a community to pick up, get people in the mindset to clean up their yard.
Yeah, I think the bucket...
Most people have that place, like spring cleanups, just come down and pick stuff up and throw it away.
Which they used to do.
That's what we're talking about right now.
Yeah, I'm talking about the car grab, too.
Shelly does it when all they pick up is like wood and stuff.
Yeah, but they do something, but it's just wood type stuff.
That's agreeable.
But, you know, people see the sign, and they're motivated, because they know that it is expected.
Yeah.
And somebody else is gonna do it, so I'm gonna join the team, and I'm gonna do a little something, too. You know, so sometimes it's just putting the word out, and just getting people to kinda think, and, you know, the first time around, you're not gonna get a lot.
Sit down, woman.
But you are going to have some people, if it's only one person, and then the next time, somebody else will jump on the bandwagon. So, if, what you're talking about is not gonna be a one-time thing. It should be an ongoing project, with the expectation that the first time you're not gonna get a lot, but as time goes on, you will get more involvement.
I also say we have an older community, and it's gonna be hard for them, because they can't do things.
We got young men in the terrific stuff, they ain't out here doing them rather old girl stuff, it's down, you know, too, it'd be a service project.
So are we talking like, currently, I have two dead cars in my yard, that are supposed to be gone now, but summer's here, but they ended up parked there in the middle of winter, and I couldn't get them out with all the snow.
Going?
Is that the kind of thing we're trying to get rid of?
I'm talking about cleaning up everybody's yard.
Or put a fence around it.
Cleaning the yard, put a fence around it, I think that was the thing, I mean, everybody does it.
That's why they came to the meeting, to see what you were thinking about for cleanup, and what the idea was. If the city was gonna have something we could work with, or if we were just supposed to do everything on our own?
I think that's what we're trying to figure out, is what can we do to help, without it being like dictatorship either, but try to help motivate at first, like she was...
And that's really what it's all about, because some people, I mean, we all, everybody lives different, and some people are more comfortable with clutter than other people. Some people like everything neat and pristine, other people go to the other stream. I mean, you know, you've got both the streams, then you have the middle. And then, like you say, there are a lot of people, and I'm included, there's a lot I can't do, I just physically am incapable of doing these things, and so I either have to ask help or let it go. And there's a lot of people in the community who are the same way, and you have to realize that some people, like they like the way they're living, but if they can be motivated to do one thing, if maybe they take out one extra item to the garbage can this week, and then they kinda think, "Wow, that really feels good." And then maybe they take out two items next week, so it's gonna take. And Larry, I see you say it in your head.
You're very...
But we're not gonna change overnight, I mean, nobody ever gets, and, and this is something that's just gonna be a process.
Well, you got one guy, don't want to pay his water bill, and he won't...
So you cut him off.
We have shut him off.
And?
Then he pays it up?
And? When you get behind.
So how far is he allowed to get behind before you shut it off?
Three hundred.
And then what is his reinstatement fee? Does he come up with that? If you shut my water off, I can guarantee you, I would have to make a deposit in order to get it turned back on.
A deposit?
If there's not anybody in this room that can tell me that you wouldn't.
No, if you get your water shut off, your water will not get turned on until you pay the three hundred bucks.
That's correct.
But there's also, there is a twenty dollar, like, turn it on fee, and a hundred dollar bill of it.
They can't pay their water bill, how you can enforce a twenty dollar turn-on fee and a hundred dollar bill?
You just don't...
Are we changing subject or what?
Yeah, I'm like, how do you get on the water bill?
Did you find the ordinance on the, on the, on the...
That's right, depending on traffic.
If I didn't pay my electric, I would not have electricity.
Pardon me?
If I didn't pay my electric bill, I wouldn't have electricity. What about your cable, how do you pay that? If you don't pay, you don't get service.
Period, parking, you don't have repairs. Got all kinds, you really got like twenty of these. So are we talking stuff anywhere in the yard, or we just talking stuff that people are putting out on the edge of the road or something?
Well, there shouldn't be stuff on the edge of the road.
Well, that's my asking. So we're talking the whole yard, right?
Well, garbage, she's wondering, she has some dead cars in her road, or in her yard.
That though, that my sister...
Well, you like, Ray, she's talking about, he wants to build a fence, cover his stuff up, he's got a whole truck out there. And that's what he wants to do, which is the right way to do it. If you don't want people to see all your stuff, and you put privacy fence, that's the way it is.
Okay, I want you to tell me how we enforce that.
Well, I don't...
Penalties? I'm not trying to be...
I'm not trying to be either, but I wanna know how you enforce it.
Well, like, if you're gonna do penalties, we have to find the ordinance, see if there are penalties, like...
Yeah, I guess, sure, Deborah says there's ordinance in there.
We, I know there's ordinances in there about cars.
There are about cars, yeah, a hundred percent, there's definitely about cars.
But it's gonna say the penalty, there's a penalty listed.
Well, let me see. It says it's about parking your car, it's not about...
So I had a comment, just kind of a question, about the cleanup. I'm out more in a rural area, and so how far is that? Is that like on the sides of the streets, or we having a day where everybody goes out and just cleans up the whole county or basalt, like around this area? Cause I know we have an issue with a lot of people from out of town just coming by and throwing garbage from their car, and there's a lot of garbage on the sides of the roads, is that what we're kinda talking about? Cause it would be good to have some trucks or something, some volunteers that go along and pick up, put them in trucks.
I don't know, baseball considered county, you know, see county guys all the time. It takes, what, inmates?
Is going to a, going to a county road?
I'll be cleaning up road crews, and stuff like that, do all that kind of stuff, I don't know.
Certain sections are not acceptable.
Here's your friend.
His house.
Well, I'm not here, I'm not there, I'm calling it home.
Oh, she called me now.
So, his house is baseball, right, Zach?
Yeah.
Yes, he is.
So...
His is one of the biggest messes, places are his.
His about garbage and stuff would be a city, that's his question.
Well, you know when we used to have whole big group of scouts and stuff, yeah, we'd take them down the streets and gather up garbage. We don't have that many kids anymore, and it's...
I didn't think our bar bits were that dirty.
I don't know, I don't drive them anywhere.
A lot of it is terminology as well, so instead of thinking of it as cleanup, why don't we think of it as beautification?
What did you say? But it gets your things, or you're gonna help do something or not, that was your basic... Yeah, maybe, huh? Is fined a fifty dollar per violation per day, or an annual fee of a thousand dollars per vehicle. For what? For a vehicle over ten thousand pounds. It's just parked and not licensed or something, or what?
How much does an average vehicle weigh?
Three thousand.
I mean, if you think, ten thousand, a big truck.
Yeah, it is. It just says, "Any person or business wishing to park one or more vehicles for a length of time longer than thirty minutes shall be responsible for a fine of fifty dollars per violation per day, or an annual fee fine of one thousand dollars per vehicle." But you're talking food trucks, then, like the potato trucks. And that's what it says about fees for parking.
I say this to kinda help things move on, but I feel like this could debate for a long time, is I think that we need to study that, and find if there is an ordinance, what the penalty is, but I also think that we as a city should initiate a cleanup day. I don't see any harm in...
A cleanup what?
A cleanup day. And if you just rented a dumpster, and had somebody stand there and say, "No, you can't put that fridge in there."
We've had cleanup days in the past.
How did they do it in the past?
That was when the town got cleaned up more than any other time, when we had the free cleanup day, but it took absolutely, literally, a thousand dollars every time we did that out of the state copper.
Because they had to use the equipment to get the stuff moved, and...
Well, people were using it by putting up fridges and lawn mowers or whatever.
Everything.
I mean, it's like Shelly...
Cause when you say cleanup, you gotta know what you mean by...
But that's when most of the stuff in town disappeared, all the old fridges, all the old stuff and everything else, that's when they cleaned it the most, put that wood and everything else. You're trying to get them to put it over there, but if they stick it on the side of the street, you gotta clean it up, then they're happy to do it, but the truth of it is, is it cost us a lot of money each time we did it. I had them, when seven truckloads of stuff down to the dump, and the city had to pay for it, on the cleanups and stuff, we had to pay for the garbage cleanups, so then garbage days was extremely expensive in the years past. We had it when Larry Russell was mayor, we initiated it, and we ran it for about seven years, it really did really good. People got to put out more and more and more stuff on the side of the street, until it was just a nightmare, and that's why they stopped it.
So here's another thought.
It was a nightmare.
Is, I've been wondering if it would be...
You'd have poisons, you'd have buckets of paint, you'd have all kinds of toxic things on the side of the street.
To do kind of like a newsletter, and put it in the water bill, where you can kinda summarize what's going on in baseball, whether it's very long or not, but you could also like ask for volunteers, would people in the community volunteer to like help? No? You don't get anybody?
But I think putting something in the newsletter saying, "Hey, we wanna do a cleanup day, and this is what we're, we would like all of you to take this day and work on your yard." I think that's a good idea, cause otherwise people won't help, that there's, some people won't know, there's a concern.
What if you did, I don't think it's that much, we used to rent one month, month for a hundred dollars, and that depends on the size and how long you have it, but, uh, the other thing that you could do to kinda motivate, if you did what she's kinda saying, if you just say, "Hey, we're gonna do a cleanup day," maybe you could offer like lemonade and cookies, turn that here, like make it fun.
I don't know. Well, if you're like, "Let me, when I need to clean up something, I have to find someone with a pickup and some muscle to load up stuff and haul it to the dump, I don't mind paying the dump fee, but I can't put it in my car, you know, it doesn't, the stuff I have doesn't fit there."
Yeah.
That sounds like an elder form project.
Look at the age of the people in this area.
I got, I got a suggestion, kind of get off what Guy was saying about, it got so expensive, you could bring refrigerators and other stuff. Find out how much it costs for the dump to take a refrigerator. And say, "Anybody wants to put the refrigerator in the dumpster, needs to bring money, cash money, to pay the offset for a refrigerator, or a lawnmower, anything, stuff like that." They wanna put it in the dumpster, the city gets the dumpster, they need to pay to put it in the dumpster.
It's not allowed, that's not acceptable. No, you got free on stuff like that, you gotta turn the free on, a lot of stuff like that, you can't just...
If they, if they...
Put responsibility on you, and it's, yeah.
If they can bring it to the dumpster, why can't you take it to the dump?
That's, that's, that would help encourage them, if they know they're gonna have to pay for it either way, they may just start taking, taking it up, but some people, who like, you know, can't get it to the dump, will get, can't find someone to take it to dumpster, the city's doing it a day like that, and they'll pay the fee to the city, what it's gonna, the city's gonna get charged by the dump.
I don't think they allow you to put a fridge in a dumpster anymore. You can't, you can't put that, it goes in a different part of the dump, you have to do totally different things and stuff.
But find out what it is, and what would be responsibility, and what needs to be done, to get rid of, you know, the big, big-ticket items that, you know, cost the city the most money, and make the people that wanna do it in the city's cleanup day, pay for it, be able to drop it off with the city.
Well, people's, people's yards are their own responsibility.
Yeah, exactly.
It's like, like, there's a, there's a point where refrigerators are in the house, in the backyard, whatever. When the yard starts overflowing, just junk, and I'm almost to that point, like I shift things around, I got lots of things to do. I need to put up a fence, and that's why I'm here today, I wanna talk about that, but it's not the city's responsibility to get rid of their first garbage, it's their own responsibility, but it's, but it needs some help, if they request that.
Are we talking about, are we talking about getting cars off the road, are we talking about...
Anything in the, in the gutter, getting off the road, there's a piece right there, nothing can be there. Wanna put it inside your yard and put a fence around it, that's fine, I don't care, we're here, we're here, it's not fun, we can look at it on your driveway.
What about people that don't mow their lawns? You drive down there by their apartment building?
I ain't worried about mowing lawns, it's just garbage, I mean, we're trying to make this place look like a decent place, right? And so, if you don't wanna take care of it, I don't care, the guy, I'm looking. Put a fence up, it's like that everywhere you go. You either put a fence up, or you clean it up. If you don't wanna clean it up, put a fence up, so everybody's gonna look at it. And you can do whatever you want, that's the way it is.
Well, here we go.
But there's state regulations, the state might open anywhere you wanna go.
Here we go, again, who's gonna enforce it?
Well, I guess I can look that up. It should be Digger County, I mean, it was state law, I don't know.
If you can get the...
County law, being one of the...
If you can get the sheriff's department up here to enforce some of these laws, have right out of it.
Well, you're the mayor, right?
I don't listen to me, I've called him, and called him, and called him. I, we had a sheriff officer come to the meeting one night, and I bitched about what's his name down here parking his semi on the street. That's a no-no, and the cop went down there and talked to him and drove off, that was the end of the story.
Call the air tow truck, you haven't towed one, you can do that, can't you?
No.
Your ordinance, just have to tow it away, you don't remember the cop?
There's more to it than just, it has to be posted for towing, it has to be posted all over the city than for towing, and there are certain procedures you have to go through on, you can't just say, "Well, I towed it because it's parked there."
If it's a state law, you can do it.
It's not a state law.
How do you know, show me.
There is no state law for parking in cities, all right? The city state will not do that, the city, the state says that's the city's responsibility, we're not gonna get involved. The state doesn't pass laws like that. That's what they're trying to find out.
So, do we want to help, that's what, boil it down to kids here? Do we help or help, like that's your decision. Your thoughts and concerns?
Have you got time to go help? No. You got time to go help? No.
Well, you're kinda helping me too, you know?
Um, I have a comment, I do like metal recycling and stuff. And so, have you looked at, like, people who do recycling, there's quite a few people, if you advertise, that they recycle, they'll come pick up your refrigerator for you, or appliances and stuff, to get the metal, and safely remove it.
He's got a whole line up and sitting out.
There are, um, yeah, I'm aware, my father-in-law, or stepfather-in-law, he do that all the time. He just advertise.
He's got a whole line of washers, dryers, fridges lined up along the fence up there, far as you can see. He's talking about everything, and he's one of the worst ones there is. He's talking about everything and he's one of the worst ones there is.
We need to, uh, better do our homework at the fork.
Good.
I think it'd probably, it'd probably be a good idea to have some answers for next month, for next year.
And, uh, so, you know, like your idea of putting the, even a little bit of man, use that without beautifying your yard or something.
Yeah.
I have a thought and it is, and maybe we can find out how much a dumpster costs a man. It'd be like the homeowners who saw stuff to get it to the dumpster. If they need help, then maybe we could have some kind of community somewhere that could help.
Yeah, do the research and turn the pages.
Well, yeah, it would be helpful if the city council was to look at the past work.
You know, you still get your mail.
The waters that I paid, all of that, so that you've got that A D S C.
Yeah.
Instead of just saying what you are having to find out and come back and report to the people next month. And do you or do you not want to have a beautification project, yes or no? And then you can have a discussion how to do that or how to go about it. But maybe the session should be, do you want to be involved or do you not?
Yeah, that's what I was kind of-
Well, I think we all want to be involved in it, but I mean, it's the same old, same old, who's gonna enforce it?
So we'll research a little bit more and then, uh, have the dumpster answered, the ordinance answered.
I think your dumpster is gonna cost you now a hundred bucks.
But that's one of the thousands of guys that left it and called them.
Like, you have it for something.
Well, he's talking about the city truck and buying fuel and fuel for the tractor and his wages.
I know. So you have a dumpster, you pay for the dumpster and you have paper.
And then somebody can just manage for the day or whatever.
I think we should have a dumpster then.
I mean, it's something.
Plus, when we haul it off, you have to pay so much, you mean, each pound you put into the garbage dumps. And even if you drag it down to Blackfoot, which is half as much as up there, it still amounts to literally hundreds and hundreds of dollars of garbage that was dumped down there every time we did it, so.
So the recycling place in Blackfoot, I've been in contact with them. They plan on coming to pick all my, my metal up. And so if I do that, maybe the same day, I can ask them, you know, to pick up other people's metal or anything that they wanted to recycle. They just have to separate it out and it has to be safe, so.
They have metal.
So do you need to make a motion?
They have a recycler place. They'll separate-
I think we moved the table up.
Don't make changes.
You moved the table up till the next time, so it could-
Then we moved all of it to this broken.
So it's not much of a problem, they'll table it?
Yeah.
Sure. Can you come back and do that, do some research?
So, Rose Lee, what's your biggest complaint?
I have scars. I, well, but I have scars, they're my sister's scars and they're gonna be gone within a month. Her husband totaled it in the winter, no, her husband totaled it during the winter. We need to get some stuff out of it.
She just didn't want to get in trouble.
Rose Lee, I don't mean to say anything against you, but you go to everybody in Bay South, have a move, oh, we're, it's only gonna be there for a month or six weeks.
No, it was only there because it was in the winter and we couldn't move it, but now I can.
You get the same story wherever you go, so.
Well, probably, yeah.
Okay.
So anyway.
I'll work on it.
We're gonna take a lot till next time.
We're gonna have to new stop sign the city owns.
That was proud of last meeting.
Oh, yeah.
What did that?
Yeah.
They're used to be a stop sign.
Yeah, exactly, it wasn't a tech, it, it, they're just not, there's nobody, there's no worse people stopping them if I don't know. If there's already one there, we took it there for a reason.
Well, and we also have to speak up to, try to stop people that are using it.
They just, they don't stop, they don't.
It's the same old, same old, who's gonna enforce it?
I told that cop about the stop, but there's a lot of people designing stuff, trying to find out.
Okay, something that other cities have done, working with the county, like you did.
That is to make sure that-
That the sheriffs have a reserve force. They're volunteers that are then totally trained, been through the police academy. They volunteer their time for the sheriff, to go on patrol with the sheriff's deputies. They are also authorized through the sheriff's department. If you want, if the city wanted to, you know, work out a deal, say, hey, can we have one of the reserves come up here on such and such a day, every week? Or, you know, pick days and stuff for so many hours and issue traffic tickets. It's a way to get them up here and that's their job, it will be to issue traffic tickets.
I don't think Dade County's got a reserve.
No, they don't, they had a trouble with it and they took it out and they-
Uh, they dropped it again? They were talking about some-
So where do they want this stop sign?
The next block panel.
Can I just say, I am opposed to a stop sign being added to Bay South.
A new one?
Like Pam said, we didn't have that before. And it was because kids would, people would not teach their kids to stay out of the street. Kids need to learn to stay in the street, but you know, we, that's-
Once they gave it a lot of rock, very house, houses, some of it's complaining. And here kids go out and play in the street. You know? Put a fence around there so the kids can't go play in the street.
I am opposed to a stop sign being added to Bay South.
They, we stopped with it, we put a whole one there.
We, the lawyer told us as a city, if we want a stop sign there, city council can put one there. That's what the lawyer said, last meeting, wasn't it?
It used to be one there years ago.
I know there was, but isn't that what the lawyer said?
There's been one down there.
So many people complained about it, the city council removed it. Not because they don't want to slow down, it's sooner it'll come to town.
Everybody come to the church and tell them to stop fresh before they get to church.
Would a roundabout work better so that it will slow people down?
Who said roundabout? We can't even afford to pave our streets working with a roundabout?
So, you don't want to do anything for round, did we get out for stuff out of the ground?
Well, do you need to do all that stuff, sir?
I don't think so, because it's, I mean, I think it would be disgusting.
Yeah, it was just disgusting. We have to end up and put it out there.
No, we didn't put it out, the stop sign?
No, we'd have to like let people bring in on it and stuff.
Well, you would.
Oh, you want to do any of that?
The lawyer told us last time, remember? If the city council wants a stop sign, put it up, you can put one up.
I don't want to stop three.
The city council can deem a safety issue and do it without community interaction.
Okay, so I have to build a stop sign.
I don't know if we have to do that.
I don't know, I don't think so.
Cause they, yeah, it's a personal thing.
We thought, how's that?
Might as well just put four-way stops on every street in town.
What's that?
Might as well put four-way stops on every street in town.
Nah, I wouldn't go that far.
That's just about how crazy it sounds to me.
See, it goes back to the same thing. I've been preaching all night long, guy. If you had somebody come in here and patrol that and give out some tickets, people would learn to slow down. But we can't get nobody up here to enforce it.
I agree, I agree. They're doing a little bit on the main road, but not here in town. Cause I, I have at least one, two, three people a day go by my house at forty, fifty miles an hour.
Everybody's complaining about that. I guess when, I guess when one of them get, get killed, I guess somebody will do something. You know? That's about it in the nutshell right there.
Usually when the kids put up the road and stop signs, they usually go tell their parents. They slow down for a while, then they go to-
Are you gonna go talk to the adults that's blowing the stop signs?
No, the kids, the kids is adults. And I go tell them, the kids slow down for a little while and then they're back to running. It helps for a little while.
Yeah, okay. Okay, now your question about seal coating?
Yeah.
Okay, what?
Could we get quotes for that?
Yes, we got one right there, fifty-four thousand dollars.
Try to pull another one, but it's not gonna happen.
You can't get nobody to call me back. So, here's the deal. We got twenty thousand right now for road maintenance.
Well, technically nineteen, a little more than nineteen, they're like-
Okay, twenty thousand. For an easy figure, okay? Okay, October one, we will have another twenty thousand because that's when the new budget kicks in.
Well, you can't go up your budget? I don't know, I've never done this before, but-
Yeah, you can, you can up your budget, but you take the Mary to pay Paul, you know? So anyway, yeah, your answer is, yes, you can. But, we have, how much money?
There's, uh, savings.
We got money in reserve, okay? It's a hundred, about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, right? I asked Peter at South Bend when he called, if we could take some of that money to pave this street. And he said, yes, that we could, but we gotta get ahold of the auditor and tell her what we want to do and make sure that we're not going over our bounds in something else, you know what I'm saying? So, uh, yeah, we'll have to.
It sounds like we can't do much. Everyone just does do road work, if they don't get twenty thousand.
We're gonna have to opt the annual man, what does it mean like?
So let's just seal coating, what about all the potholes?
Guys, slowly get in the field.
So they'll just come back every year until you get the road fixed? Because it's, your potholes don't, that's only a temporary patch.
No, not necessarily, they don't necessarily, they don't come back every year, do they?
Only on some of them, but most of them, it depends on when that patch is.
Okay. So I know that big patch, it's wearing through it.
What?
That big patch down the street is getting worn through.
Yeah, we know that.
We know that.
We know that.
That's what we're waiting for, to find out what to do here because I'm gonna have to cut a big patch off each end of that thing because the road is really bad into its response. And it's gonna have to be a big notch before we seal coat.
Do you think the big patch will work?
Ground keeps subsiding in that one area from the old trees.
He's talking about here, he's talking about, you know how the bunks are? Okay, he's talking about, uh-
Yeah, extended.
A big graduated feather amount with hot mix, not cold mix, but we have to use hot mix. And then, but we don't want to do that till we just, before we get ready to seal coat, if we're gonna seal coat.
So how long's the seal coating last?
I don't know, how long's seal coat last?
About ten, twelve years.
It was sealed coating, um, we, we would have-
When they say it's already one, five years.
Depends on the code you're putting there, if you've got really no cracks, it'll last longer. But if it's got a lot of cracks, they reappear.
How many roads is that, that is the main one?
This is four, then, four, four blocks, a little over four blocks.
The other thing you can remember about seal coat, like I started to say, it depends on the condition of the road and the soil around it. Um, if we have a really, really couple of wet winters and the water's including underneath the pavement, it's gonna start breaking down sooner.
Yeah, we don't know that.
So don't forget, um, like where my, where my house is, on eight hundred, there was a lot of rain and a lot of water. And so that's kind of a deep area. It looks like, um, that we need to maybe add something, maybe a drain or something? Right there, because it just always fills up in the same area.
We already planned on that. Cover across. Cover across. Back in front of Zax, take that, back in front of Zax, take that bunch of water across the lawn. You take that big bunch of water down alongside Zax, you're working it out. We gotta, we gotta put a cover here.
I thought we was gonna do that.
We are.
A year or two ago.
So the funds that he's talking about-
He's going to have a doctor.
So the funds that he's talking about is from the state treasures.
You'd mentioned, uh, Robin about, you'd mentioned that Robin about Idaho Supreme down the fur.
Sending Idaho Supreme down the fur. Did you want to hear that one? Okay, did you want to hear that one? Idaho Supreme, I don't know what they did. Idaho Supreme, I don't know what they did, but over the last little while, worked on last year. We have been getting, worked on last, we have been getting about eleven to twelve, which is about cycles of pumpouts which is about forty thousand gallons of water. During the winter time, during the winter time, we're only pumping out about twenty-four gallons. So they do about four and four in the winter time. And so they were much, during the winter time, about as much as the whole town of Bay South. And they've been doing it up until the nineteenth of this month also. They've been doing it up until the nineteenth of this month also, it's blocked in half. Whether they watch the video, whether they watch the work video.
Well, we okay, you remember them down there. We okay you to put that meter in there down there.
When I was reading that, that period of time, they were running much slower.
Well, that meter, they get it for you to read all the time. We put that meter in there for you to read all the time.
Because I gotta take the batteries out and replace them and take, cause I gotta take the batteries out and replace them and take the batteries in, replace them. I can put them out.
Take the batteries out. Take the batteries out. You gotta take them out to read the meter?
No.
You gotta take them out to read the meter?
No, it's to run, because it takes a week out of choosing batteries in there. Once a week out of putting two set battery in. And that was when we were having, and that was when we were having the same amount of water running out of the stadium. If I can read it from inside here on the stadium, tell how much water's coming out of our sources, how much water's coming out of our-
Why don't we put a couple of solar panels down there, let the sun-
We couldn't have to put them up on his pole. We'd have to put those on his pole or put a pole up the street now.
Should we be doing all the seal coating?
What?
Should we be doing all the seal coating? Gotta stay on track.
Yeah, all along I was reading, it wasn't no problem. Yeah, all along I was reading, it wasn't no problem. So, and then it's been two months afterwards, it still wasn't no problem. But for the guys where I had been watching, I got it. I hadn't been watching it, but I got it. Exact amount of water. Visualized ponds and exact amount of water. There's a lot of period of time during the winter, when there's a lot of period of time during winter, when we have ponds, twice as much water flowing into our ponds as we pump out into the town.
What's it gonna take to make them guys go to fur? What's it gonna take to make them guys go to fur? We just can't call them up one day and say, hey. We just can't call them up one day and say, hey, you guys are sending too much water. We're not gonna take it anymore, send it to fur.
Here's the question, here's the question. Here's the question, here's the question.
About fourteen thousand dollars.
We collect about fourteen thousand dollars a month.
We collect that much, is that?
And they put out as much water as we do. And they put out as much water as we do, what should we be charging them?
Well, it sounds like you need to monitor that longer.
That's right, that's what, she, she come up to the same thing. We come up to that last month, that I need to start getting a daily monitoring. But all of a sudden they dropped and stopped putting out the water that they was putting out right now, but.
Now, I think they've done that too, after we put the meter in, it slowed the way down.
They did it, when we put the meter in, they stopped running it down there. I figured they've got a set of valves down there that they run water to us. Guy, do you need help reading that thing on a daily basis, whenever?
Do I need help?
Yeah.
No, I just-
So you need to make a motion on this seal coating?
Every day.
That's where we're at, then I'll tell you guys.
Okay, put the seal hole, seal coating on hole. Cause you've got to call the auditor and ask her about the money.
Okay, well, but, okay. Okay, so put it on. Okay.
Okay, I guess Zach stirred up, and I need, I need the interpreter to turn it around so I can hear.
I'll, I'll step out.
I gotta watch him.
Yeah.
Well, I know you do.
I'll, I'll turn the speaker out.
Okay, so I'm just asking permission, if it would be possible to bring a small modular, it's going to be small. I haven't really looked yet, or shopped for one yet, I wanted to ask permission first. Um, for a small modular home, it'll be really small, just like a room for homeschooling my kids. Um, it's not gonna have really anything, it's not like a living space, it will just be a room and a bathroom, possibly, that's my question.
You want my answer now, or you want to say to cancel?
So, I just want anybody to tell me if that's doable or not.
So, but is it going to be, is it gonna be in the form of a trailer house, is it gonna be in the form of like a mayhem?
No, it's just kind of like the modular, not, not a mobile home or anything. It's just gonna be small, possibly two rooms together. You can give them, order them however, like the tiny homes, you can order them however you want. Um, it won't be large, it will just be, um, an open space inside. Uh, just so that I can set up, um, a place for my kids to play, for them to do their schoolwork, um, do their reading, their um, math, all that kinda stuff, it'll be easier in the winter time, and it's kind of a space for them outside the home for school.
Okay, ask him what happened to the deal on the two trailers, he was supposed to have done something with them, I don't know, four or five years ago. And he never did.
Yeah, I remember the one RV is super small, and so, um, that can't be used for the kids. And then the second one is just an old green and white, um, trailer, like, uh, I just have storage in that now. I don't know if you remember that, but I, um, just had like storage, used that for storage. I don't have a garage or anything, so that's what you.
He was supposed to made it so it didn't look like a trailer. That was the deal, wasn't it?
No, that was just used for storage, I just couldn't use it for a residence, for living in. And so, it's just a single white, the single wide one. Um, and I was hoping to add like a new, um, I just want to add a new building that's gonna be smaller for like school. And then, I don't wanna worry about, you wanna. And the green and white one that I use for storage, I can move that, I can move that clear into the back, so that it's not really visible on the road in front.
Yeah, I mean, it's posted, but they haven't done it. I don't know where he's gonna put what he's talking about.
Not far from the, the house, just so that it's easy access, um, on eight hundred north. You can see like the old, the green and white one, um, mobile home right there, that I use for storage. I will move that out of the way, and then I'll put the newer building, um, right near the front there.
Why can't he use his house?
Oh, it's a really old house, it's like built in the nineteen hundreds, really old, and there's just not room for the kids.
Small is subjective, you need measurements, footage. What's small to you, maybe is big to somebody else?
Yeah, I was kind of thinking maybe twenty-two by twenty-four. And it's like the old house that was.
Twenty-two by twenty-four?
No, 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 no.
Sounds like he needs to.
Oh, I haven't looked at the size, uh, the new modular home that I wanna put on there, the modular room, I haven't looked yet. I mean, they have, um, maybe twenty-four, twenty-four by, by maybe sixty, somewhere around that. But, I don't know yet, that's kind of a rough idea.
If these things are just for a schoolhouse, his best option might be a, one of those ten by twelve tub sheds. That's all he needs for a schoolroom. Doesn't even know twenty-four foot wide, a sixteen foot long, that is way too big than a normal classroom.
And is he going to throw the bathroom up to the city?
What's that?
If he has a bathroom, is he gonna hook it up to the city?
Oh, I don't, I don't find that out that way.
He's gonna have a bathroom when he hook it up to the city.
Yeah, he, well, it was mentioned that a place for them to school, plenty, and possibly a bathroom, so that's why I asked.
Um, I, I thought possibly a bathroom, but then I'm thinking an easier way would just be to have the electrical and the lights, um, added to that. So possibly not, um, putting a bathroom in.
I think it's a law, if you have kids, you know, you gotta have a bathroom, don't you?
Yeah, I don't know.
I would think so, but I don't know.
Which is gonna add all sorts of more expenses, you have a bathroom, you have water inspections.
Clean out trailers, not put up a big shop slash storage.
Yeah, and I don't want that.
Like, you know, a shop that you can live.
What?
Cause, I mean, we have the orange stuff, the trailers.
Right.
Why don't you have him? Why don't you see if he'll build onto his house? Build a room onto his house?
Uh, the structure's really bad, it's very old, and so I'm not sure if I wanna put money into adding a room to that house, and um, it would take a lot because of the structure is so old. So I thought it'd be easier just to get a modular that I could move in, it's brand new, it would look really nice. And, you know, that other one is, like, I could see the, the walls and stuff kind of tipping.
I think he's gotta go another route myself, but it's up to city council.
Ordinance over trailers, and then, he could just have like a storage shop built with a room inside. And storage.
You have to, you have to, you'll get a permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've had one like that at a farm, after, red barn.
For one kid, for school?
One male, not a female.
Oh, I have two kids, I have two kids.
Okay.
Yeah, I know it, it will take a lot, and my kids are young right now and stuff, so I'm just trying to get prepared, coming up with some ideas, what I can do. Um, and it would really better the property too, I think, if I put something new on there. Um, and I just want my kids to have a place to go for activities, for their books, for, you know, all of their learning, and a place for them to play.
Okay, here's what I'm gonna tell him.
Do you vote on it?
He's not gonna move a trailer in there, anything that looks like a trailer. If he wants to build something, that's fine.
He has to get a permit though.
So, um, a modular, a modular is not a trailer, is that what you're talking about?
We've went over that before. He's already got two in there.
I think he's gotta get a permit through the county or some, whatever he wants, so it's like building a shop or something.
Is he demolishing anything?
I think you're right. That goes through the county too.
Yeah. I mean, we have our own citizens, yeah, but we still have to get it.
Yeah, exactly. What'd he say?
He was just clarifying what I interpreted you guys talking about, is building like something, a detached shop garage or something. Um, then you get a permit through the county, it's like, okay, something that's detached. And they have to go through the county for a permit.
You have to get a permit from the city to go to the county first. And the city has a rule against city houses that don't have a foundation. What?
Single wide, yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't know, what do you consider modular?
I don't know what a modular is either.
Okay, the difference between modular and manufactured is, a manufactured is a mobile home, that comes in, you axles on it. Has the metal frame, you pull the axles off. A modular is considered stick-built, it's loaded all in a trailer, brought in and set up. They're both built in a factory, but they're built a little bit different.
Well, that ain't gonna happen either, cause long later.
There's a foundation rule of having foundations. That's why trailer houses aren't allowed.
But is it a house that has to be a foundation, there's gotta be a room, so what if you built a shed and use that?
It hasn't been addressed, the sheds. The county may have a rule for inhabitable spaces, and if it's being used as a schoolroom, it may fall under the county's rule for an inhabitable space. And then, if they rule it as an inhabitable space, it will need to have a foundation.
Gotcha, okay, I don't know anything about our building code, so I totally am dark on those. I know about trailer houses, you know, it's it.
Yes.
Now, I notice, like, in Blackfoot, they have a lot of new modulators that they're putting. Um, and they don't have any, like, foundations on them or anything. And they can be really, like, different sizes. So I'm not sure, is the county different rules?
What, what's he talking about, than the city?
Yeah, Blackfoot, they've moved a lot of different modular homes recently, into Blackfoot. A modular, so it's not a trailer, it's the modular stick-built, but they are putting them on foundations.
They might not have the rule that we do.
And I think, I, I, I don't, I think they're on a foundation because, I believe the county has a law about, a statute about them having to be on a foundation, just like the city does.
In both places.
Yes.
If there's gonna be a person in it.
Yes, if there's a person living in it, it has to be on a foundation.
Even if they're just in it?
Yeah, and it, it may be a, um, it may just be a, a foundation you don't see, because it's been like a slab.
It might also be almost stricter with school.
Baseball, how's that word then? No trailer houses now, yeah, foundation.
Yeah, yeah, foundation.
I knew about the trailer house.
You could tell him just to come up with a plan and an idea and present that.
Yeah.
And then it could be approved or disapproved.
Yeah, put all details, sizes, how the electrical's gonna be run, and all that in the plan.
Measurements, we need measurements.
Yeah, I heard the gentleman who sprayed it pretty with water.
Yeah, I was just, I just wanted to do kind of open discussion, um, tonight, so that I knew if I could go forward or not, with more research on it.
I would say more research is always better.
Yeah, I'll research all of that, kind of review everything, um, maybe bring in a picture of what it would look like, so you understand, um, better. You know, I don't wanna do things last minute, my kids are really young, so this is early, I'm just kinda looking into it, making plans. I think it's good.
Okay, so what do we do with that, table or?
Yeah, he'll bring it back up at another time, he's gonna go and bring us some more information.
Yep, I'll do some research and then, um, get kind of a plan together, what I will do on my property and with the building. Um, get all the requirements that are needed for it, and make sure that everything is done, um, following all the requirements of the city ordinances and stuff, and then I'll bring it to you. Oh, okay, thanks.
You probably don't want that, don't you?
Is that it?
Yeah, she could sell, take a look, get more plans, pictures.
Probably right on the top. She's too busy.
Okay, I will bring that back to you, um, at a later date, with everything.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Mitchell, you're up, buddy. And the answer to your deal is already yes.
Okay, so I wanna build a fence, but I have questions, Kenny. So, guy has told me I need to be X amount of feet from the center of the street back. He says he thinks it's thirty-two feet. I'll put my fence back that far. Part of my fence, I want taller than six feet, and I'll, I'll show you what I'm trying to accomplish.
I don't think there's any restrictions on height.
All I know is like, pipe is right there.
It's not next to a corner.
Corner, you know, you gotta be.
Oh, yeah.
So this is what I want to build, it's like.
Trust me, there is, people stop by our house.
Yeah.
Pretended we were.
So the fence will look like this, and I want it to look like an old western family. And it's gonna be like a, a little roof, and so it has to be six feet to walk in that, but the peaks of the, the so-called roofs on the fence need to be seven to eight feet. So the fence is gonna go like this, and I just wanna make sure it's okay to be above six feet.
You know what I told you, why?
It's gonna look good, so I.
You know what I told you, why?
That's a gate that I put together, so it's gonna look like that.
You know what I told you, why? You're gonna have movie stars coming up here that wanna make a movie out of this thing.
So, I, I, I really do wanna incorporate Bay Salt's history with this, and in the center, I'd like to put Bay Salt on the front and signage, just, just as.
You gotta go work it up at his place, you can go look it on his net.
So the fence, this is my property, and so, this is along the road right here, and then the shot, so this is where the fence is gonna be, it's not on the corner. Uh, and it's just right along the road, and it'll be thirty-two feet back.
Now, we need a check on that, I don't think it's that far.
Okay, so I looked up just general standard stuff, but yes, we need to look it up, and some, some codes are like ten feet, some are fifteen. So, in the, in the ordinances here, it's probably gonna say how far, and actually, when you, when you go down the road, you can see everybody's property line about thirty-two feet. So, I, I built a swing open gate, and so, the fence will mimic that.
So that's gonna be a cool deal.
So I just wanna make sure that I can be seven to eight feet in some parts.
I don't think there's any height restrictions, is there?
As long as it's not, you know, like on the corner.
Yeah.
No, you, you. So, if, if that's okay, I'm gonna plan on that, and these are, these are the dimensions, seven, eight feet tall, this'll be six feet, there'll be a little three foot porch. You know, it'll, it'll look like an old western town. You know, it'll, it'll look like an old western town. Uh, front edge, that's what I'm aiming to do. And I need to like, I, I, I know my, my projects are kind of looking kind of crappy, so I wanna put that stuff.
They worked together years ago.
Cause I, I like to have it as well, but I don't like to see it as I'm driving down the road either, so. If you guys are okay with that, then I'll do it.
Need to vote on it? Yeah, it could be.
I make emotionally agree with it.
If you feel like, if you feel like that this is okay, if you'll initial that for me, please, so that I have that that says, okay.
Initials, yes.
So these are, these are the dimensions I have. Just put initials here and as long as you're okay with it, then I'll just do it.
I'm telling you, he doesn't want those numbers anymore.
Yeah, that's correct.
Oh, we all have to...
They put fences up like that in other people's houses, getting away their judge.
Well, I've had actually two people...
Well, we wouldn't have to pay him.
He likes to work through it.
That's what we need to do, he just put like fences like that around everyone's property.
Eight or nine of them left, but that's original, so that he... He put together, I don't know, a lot of time.
Yeah, okay. So you're okay with this? I'm gonna do this. It'll be this tall. It'll be nice, it'll be really nice, so.
Buy it out.
You're coming to help?
Yeah.
I can't have her nails.
Okay, is there anything else anybody has?
Well, do we want a state, you all, on the sewer ponds? The solar sewer stuff.
It's basalt.
I know, but do they all look bad?
Yeah, he, he complimented and said, you gotta have this, this, and this. Guy figured it'd run up to at least 150,000 or 200. So there's your government bureaucracy.
They made it so it's just impossible to put up that thing. They passed a new law at the end of 2021 that allowed us not to no longer use a low pressure system. We have to have it, we have to have it. So that it's got a monitoring system, which means we're gonna have to put a power down there. It's gotta have a monitoring system where the sun comes, or the wind comes up above, sub above us or below us and shuts it down. And then it'd have to have all this other entails in it. And they changed it from $15,000 fix to 150, 200,000. And then we have to get a whole brand new license to cover it, so that was kind of blown it off. The only other... Our options now is put in another pond, like we was originally talking, but the other three, they're currently making into another pond. By the way, our ponds are, they were coming down, they started coming back up and the rain's not helping. And the people, the guys that are managing are saying, is there any chance of us running down the earth? And they want me to go ahead and start running it down the earth. I have, I have to go in and talk to them, manage it, everything else. I was telling them, I was hoping that the water would go down.
Are we that close?
It was down and then it come back up and these rain events are helping with. And so every time it's bad, something like that, and we got lucky that these guys started pumping less water into it. Like I said, I kinda wonder if we didn't get somebody watching it and say, hey, something's happening up there to earth. Because all of a sudden, we're pumping half as much water into the sewer system since the night came this month than we have for the whole year. We're putting half as much water into our specific lagoons right now in this last month as we did for the whole, any month in the last year.
Oh, any month? I thought you said...
No, it's, all of a sudden, we've dropped, just the amount of water dropped, it's just phenomenally dropped. We, we, our pumps were kicking out 11, 12 times a day and right now they're kicking out five or six. Or 11, 12 times an hour or a day, a day, 11 or 12 times a day. And right now, they're only kicking out four or five times a day for pumping everything out. So all of a sudden, we're using, we're running a lot less water down. But I didn't realize how much they did. We had some months or some days of 14, 14 times the pumping kick on. And that was going down. And like I said, there was months during the wintertime last year that we were pumping twice as much into our lagoon as we were pumping out of the rails into the city to be used in the city. So, well, if we could get them guys just to play like they're doing right now.
I thought they were full.
What? They've got a bastin' thing there. They just speed it up and cut more waste in it.
Well, what do you think about going down and talking to them?
Find out why, find out why they use so much water.
Russell, who would we talk to?
Probably Gary Robinson.
Gary, okay.
He's the manager down there.
That he is. And that's, I, I was wondering too, why are we getting as much water?
Cause there must be a reason by...
They, they told me over and over that the only thing they have is hand washing area and the bathrooms is all run down there.
Well, and it is, cause all the rest they put out on the spray zills.
But, but there, there are times when we...
So, so maybe they need, you need to let them know where they're...
That they cleaned up the whole shop and everything else and it runs into our lagoon.
If they, oh, like if they...
Can you set up a meeting for Guy and I to come down and talk to Gary?
I'll make me a little milk. That's why I have a little milk up here.
Like, like she was saying, all of a sudden, I was gonna get in and just hook the, hook the meter back up and start taking a daily read on this one here and on this one here and go over the period of the next month and get an exact read. But all of a sudden, they're playing, somebody's playing there. I mean, is, is everybody in Basalt shitless?
I, I think we, Guy, when push comes to shove, I think we tell them, if, if you guys can't relax this thing out, you're gonna have to build a bird.
How much did they pay us?
Their bill is 818,000.
Eight hundred, he said 14.
14,000 is what we cut from the rest of the city. 800 is what we cut from them all. And if they're putting in the same amount as the rest of the city, how much should they pay? 12,000?
Cause he was saying to me the other day that they put out more than most of the city at Basalt.
If that continues, we need to raise their bill.
Huh?
If that continues, we need to raise their bill.
The thousands, and all we need to do is we need to just tell them, uh, you can take it down and put it somewhere else. And we can get down, and our sewers would never be a trouble. We'd ever, ever even get close. What is that?
They'd have to make pipes.
They'd have to go down and run a new line or work something to the end of town.
And going under those traps.
I know.
Motion.
I know. Either that or put a new one in the group.
All fair. Okay.
All right, we're sure.
Huh?
We are done.
Okay.
So, I was gonna come early and say, is it okay for general public to come to this meeting?
Yes.
What's that?
I'd make comments or am I just supposed to be quiet?
We don't have people come in.
It's a public meeting, um, make comments.